April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the school board for Dixon County. Members of the audience are reminded that this is a meeting of the Dixon County School Board to conduct the business of the school district in the public. So thank you all for being here this evening. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you all. Please join us with the glads religious. Mr. Sorrels.
Attention, salute, plan.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, we are up here today with us representatives from White Glove Elementary School. They are the white, white glove elements. We have representatives from both the fourth grade and the fourth grade. Who have nobody with us on this stage, this lesson, that's all that they brought in, who are behind our second meeting. Representatives of White Glove Elementary School, live at two feet and also finish. They are also very proud to accomplish, they got this thing. It's pretty much what it needs to have it behind them. In fact, the third grade, tell me the first thing they did this year was math and use the calculator in math. You can calculate all the things. Fourth grade appreciates all their teachers and the fine demonstration that is represented there. But the one thing that's most commission found in our history is Dixon, the therapy dog train. The office, the big Dixie and also Al Dexter that call our nerves when the storm comes. So let me introduce to you from the third grade, Miss Haisley Kelsa. From the fourth grade, Miss Karma Allison from Roundhouse Hall.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for participation. Parents, you're welcome to stay or you can leave. It's whatever's best for you. Again, welcome to everyone, board members. We have been presented with an agenda. I will say after the meeting, we're going to have an executive session. So if you all will, you'll be staying to that happening. So we have been presented with an agenda. Dr. Weeks, any changes or additions?
Yes, sir. Board members under item three C, I'd like to add number four, Dixon County High School Tennis Courts. And item four D of review of job descriptions, item four D.
Board members, any other changes or amendments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Underwood. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have under one D approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which was March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any changes to addition or revision by board members? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Make to approve.
The motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, under second item under recognitions, guest recognition, Ms. Hudson. Thank you for being here tonight. It's good to see you.
We'd like to ask our art teachers from the two high schools to come forward soon.
Uh, well, welcome. I get everybody. Thank you for being here. I know you all here soon. Still, thank you. My name is Zach Kinzro. I am the executive director of the Congress Board to tell me to come and down the city. I am here tonight as the president of Art in the Heart Dixon. Art in the Heart is a non-profit organization right here in Dixon County, dedicated for promotion of the visual arts here in Allen County. And one thing we do every year is we have Art in the Art Auction. And every year, the last couple of years, what we've done is we've decided we will get a certain percentage of profit from that auction to a worthy cause. Because last year, we gave money to the Brin Slush players. And this year, we have decided to take thirty percent of, so fifteen percent each of that profit towards the art programs at the high schools here in Dixon County. So I had the check for the Prequod Art Department and the Dixon County High School Art Department, and you know, seven hundred dollars. So I'm proud to present to whoever's on which side of the. Dixon. And Prequod.
Thank you for that. We do appreciate the arts and we appreciate the Clement Railway Museum for being here and what you do for our community. So we'll move on to agenda, item two B, student recognition. Dr. Weeks?
Board members, during our April board meeting, we traditionally have recognized those students who have won an award at the high school level. Those awards would be earned at either the regional level, district level, region, state, or national level. So tonight, I think we have forty different presentations and Dr. Faulkner and Mr. Charles, thank you for helping us line those up. Mr. Parker, could I ask if you helped present the following certificate to the individual or individual group? First from Dixon County High School, Aubrey Reynolds, first place in the AHF Annual Math Competition. Ms. Lydia Jones for the AHF Math Competition. Evie Stidle in Geometry for the Math Competition at Austin P. Matthew Potts in Free Calculus at Austin P. Geometry Team from Dixon County High School, second place overall Geometry Division Math Competition at Austin P. Dixon County High School Ag Issues Team, first place in the Middle Region. Ag Issues, yes. And also from the Dixon County Ag Issues Team, we have third place overall in speaking. Been a presentation regarding the Dixon Fuel Terminal.
Right.
Yep, and Rachel. Thanks. Dixon County High School, Valerie Bianchi, Mid-State Choir. Dixon County High School Mid-State Choir, Ross Metters. Dixon County High School Mid-State Choir, Katie Mobley. Also from Dixon County High School Mid-State Choir, Charlie Green. Dixon County High School All-State Choir, Ross Meadows. And from Dixon County High School, first place organizational leadership and FBLA at the State Leadership Conference, Hunter Tompkins. From Dixon County High School, fourth place in Dental Science, Hosa, Alicia Patel. Third place in cultural diversities and disparities at the Hosa Leadership Conference from Dixon County High School, Katie Mobley. Carly Breeze from Dixon County High School, Hosa Leadership Conference Physical Therapy. Dixon County High School Hosa Sarah Renner, the Hosa President, National First Place Chapter for Be the Match. They raised more than seventy-five hundred dollars in a national service project. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Haley, could you help us recognize the following individual? From Creekwood High School, third place in the Pottery Division at the State Beta Convention, Faith Bellamy. Also from Creekwood High School, third place in recyclable art, Division Two, State Beta Convention, Madeline Offler. Creekwood High School, third place in eleventh grade science, I'm sorry, social studies at State Beta Convention, Dalton Shook. Creekwood High School FFA, the Plow Silver Award at the state level with a ten percent membership increase, a superior chapter award, state level from Creekwood FFA. The entire chapter, yes, ma'am. So if you represent me. Mia, while you're here, Mia Knoller, Knoller, I'm sorry, from Creekwood High School FFA, the High Point, High Point Market Barrow in the Tennessee Swine Show. Creekwood High School FFA, All District, Clint Morgan. Creekwood High School FFA, All District, Jamison Ford. Creekwood High School, All District, Carter Thomason. Creekwood High School, All District Basketball, Clint Morgan. Creekwood High School, All District Basketball, Jamison Ford. Creekwood High School, All District Basketball, Carter Thomason. Creekwood High School Cheerleaders, eighth place in the National Two Leading Association. Thank you. Creekwood High School Robotics Team, TSA Webmaster, in second place, Kaylee Lovell. Same award, Austin Albert Creekwood High School Robotics, TSA Webmaster, second level. She's going to accept that. And Austin also is a second place at the MTSU STEM Competition from Creekwood High School. Thank you. Creekwood High School Levi Cranfield, from Creekwood High School, second place at the MTSU STEM Competition. Caitlin Runkel from Creekwood High School, second place, MTSU STEM Competition. Robert Pentecost, Creekwood High School, first place in speaking skills at the Hosa State Leadership Convention. From Creekwood High School, Tate Purnell, second place in the Hosa State Leadership Competition, Family Physician. From Creekwood High School Volleyball, the State Tournament MVP, Katie Bowers. From Boys Bowling, Creekwood High School, District Twelve Champions and Region Six Runners Up, Boys Bowling Team. From Boys Bowling, Creekwood High School, qualified for the state and finished eighth in the state, Christian Baker from Creekwood High School. Boys Bowling Qualifier for State, Aiden Raymer. Creekwood High School Boys Bowling Qualifiers for the State, Ryan Watts. The Girls Bowling Team of the District Twelve Champions, Region Six Runners Up, and the State Tournament Runners Up. Creekwood High School, oh, here we go. Girls Bowling Qualifier for the State and finished fourth in the state is Malaney Blaylock. Girls Bowling State Qualifier, Lauren Brew. Girls Bowling State Qualifier, Abby Mann. And Girls Bowling State Qualifier, Kylie Wright.
All right. Congratulations to all those students and all those teams. Thank you for your participation. That's awesome. Board members, next on our agenda, under recognitions, we have students. So thank you all for being here again tonight. And I think Ms. Ann Claire, what's going on at Creekwood? Your final presentation.
April has been a busy month for Creekwood. We are now in the middle of EOC testing. Students and teachers have been preparing for this all year and we cannot wait to celebrate the success of our students. For activities and academics, this Saturday, our seniors will attend prom at Hickory Meadow. We are excited for prom and look forward to being together at the class. Graduation will be held on Thursday, May eighteenth, which is quickly approaching. Last month, our seniors picked up cap and gowns and our medalists in citizenship faculty awards were announced. Blue Medalist, Anna Claire Christie, Red Medalist, Clint Morgan, and Gray Medalist, Claire Bloodson. Our Boys Citizenship Award winner is Clint Morgan and our Girls Citizenship Award winner is Anna Claire Christie. Our seniors are also excited about visiting their elementary schools to participate in elementary walks this month. It'll be great to see our old classrooms and former teachers. EOC Testing is underway at Creekwood. Our students and teachers have worked so hard this school year in preparation for exams. We wish all of our students the best of luck during testing. On April fourteenth, the seniors who will be attending Nashville State in the fall went to new student orientation at the new Dixon campus. On April eighteenth, our very own English teacher, Ms. Ashlyn Turbo, was selected as News Two Educator of the Week. Our students appreciate her and her hard work. For Clubs, the Hosa Club traveled to Knoxville at the beginning of the month to compete at Hosa State Competition. Members attended college expos, academic workshops, and competed in their specific competitions. We had eight students placed in the top five in the state. Throughout the year, Hosa will have their banquet on May tenth to induct the new officers and present awards. The Beta Club is preparing for their end of the school year Special Olympics event. We are excited to bring this event back to Creekwood. Creekwood FFA has been selling produce the past two weeks. The club has been selling plants and vegetables, raising almost two thousand two hundred dollars. FFA will be having their annual banquet, May fifth, to elect the new officers and give out awards. The Thesbian Society put on Shrek the Musical the past two weekends. They had a full house every night and put on a wonderful show. We are beyond excited that Shrek has been nominated for seven T-Pac Spotlight Awards, including Outstanding Lead Performer, Outstanding Supporting Performer, Outstanding Dramatic Performer, All-Star Pass, Special Recognition, Outstanding Design Concept, and All-Star Crew. Cast and crew will attend T-Pac for this special award ceremony on Saturday, May thirteenth. For Sports, the Creekwood Softball Team is about to begin district tournament play in Greenbrier next week. The team finished second during the regular season with a winning record eighteen-seven thus far. Coach Clapper stated that our baseball team has been working very hard this year and are playing really well considering the circumstances of not being able to play on their home field. He's super proud of them. Ally Deal, a member of the trap team, was recently named Cookville Invitational Outstanding Female Athlete. She placed second in the one hundred meter, long jump, and high jump. The Creekwood Fishing Team competed on April twenty-third in the last Tennessee Bass Nation High School Tournament. They fished, they fished out of Cheetum Lake with four teams finishing in the top twenty-five. Stone Grove and Logan Allen placed tenth, and Jack McElwain and Dyson Weaver placed sixteenth. Congratulations to the following seniors who have signed this month. Braxton Walker has signed with the University of Tennessee Cheer Team. Clint Morgan signed with Bethel University Basketball Team. Katie Bowers signed with Fred Hardman Volleyball, and Tate Papciki has signed with the UT Martin Rodeo Team. Coach Gage Parker, the boys soccer head coach, is excited how the season is going and the growth of the program. They play next Thursday, May fourth, at Westridge. As the year comes to the close, I would like to thank Dr. Weeks and this board for the opportunity to serve as Creekwood Student Board Representative. Dixon County Schools has been a wonderful system to grow up in and I'll forever be thankful for the opportunity and memories it has provided me.
What's going on in Creekwood? Board members' questions about what's going on in Creekwood? Ms. Christie, thank you. Ms. Thompson, what's going on at Dixon County High School?
Here.
Exactly.
So since we last met, DCHS students have been exceptionally busy wrapping up extracurricular and academic events and projects. Youth Leadership Dixon County held interviews for Nick Pierce's Student Government Class. This year, over thirty-five students applied. Youth Leadership Two recently put on the tenth annual dance-off in the den. Blood Red took home this year's victory. Over the past few months, they were able to raise over $34,000 to be donated straight to the Child Advocacy Center. Tona Ice Trucks have been coming up to campus for students to enjoy a snow cone during lunch to help ring in and celebrate the end of the school year. Our DCHS Drama Club just finished their spring play, The Little Mermaid. Not only did the club perform four nights in a row, but also invited kids to tea time with Ariel after the show. We are also very proud of our DCHS Hosa Club. They traveled to Knoxville at the beginning of the month where President Sarah Renner accepted the National Service Project Award. DCHS Hosa was recognized as the number one Hosa chapter in the nation for helping support a nonprofit organization called Be the Match. Baseball recently defeated our rival Henry County and earned the right to play in the district tournament, which will be held at the Shelby Rife Field on the Fourth of May. At the last board meeting, I made the statement that Rachel Brewer was set to break many records this season in track and she, as well as other teammates, are doing, are definitely doing that. This team is breaking records that have not been broken since nineteen eighty-five. Just last night, both the boys and girls were named conference champions for the second time in a row. Our DCHS Track and Field Team is definitely having a successful season. Students are narrowing down their college or job opportunities as well as receiving a few final scholarships. Ms. Madonna has been working hard to prepare for College Shining Day on the twelfth to celebrate students' future plans. Students attending T-CAP got to take a quick trip to the Dixon Campus to participate in Signing Day. Students were able to take a tour and meet with their future professors. Representatives from TBA were on campus today to give a STEM grant to Coach Clifton's class for digital electronics. Many students are looking forward to the new opportunities that they will have with this grant. We have completed six full days of end-of-course testing. Teachers and students have worked hard this year to prepare for these tests and are eager to see their growth in their results. Seniors have exactly fifteen days until they walk down the hill in their caps and gowns. I know that we are all looking forward to chanting our last Cougar Breakdown in open court in the next few days. As I close my final speech as the DCHS Student Board Representative, I would like to thank the board as well as Dr. Faulkner for this opportunity. Everyone on the board has been exceptionally kind and welcoming to both Anna Claire. I've enjoyed spending my Thursday nights listening and learning new things. That value opportunity to serve as the voice of DCHS. As I have a valuable opportunity to service the voice of DCHS, get into here. Thank you again for this incredible way of opportunity.
Thank you. Board members' questions about what's going on at Dixon County High School? Right. We're very proud of both of you and I'm sure near the end of the meeting comments, we'll probably have more today. So, but thank you for both of those speeches, what presentations, what's going on. So, we'll move on to the next agenda item under three, item three, staff reports. We'll start with finance, three B.
For my board members, item three B one in your packet, uh, has our summary of revenues and expenditures to date, uh, through March thirty-first. Uh, revenues are at eighty-four point six percent at sixty-two or sixty-one point eight million. Our expenditures are fifty-one point nine million or sixty-four percent of our budget. Revenues from property tax have come in very strong at eleven point one million or a hundred and ten percent of our budget. Sales taxes at thirteen point three million at ninety-nine point eight percent of our budget. See our utilities, diesel fuel and gasoline are all places that we monitor regularly and you will see those. Detail reports are following on the page behind there.
Board members' question about the monthly reports or the summary. But we've got an opportunity to review it.
If not, one forty-two fund is behind there. That's our federal projects fund and again showing twenty-nine point seven million dollars coming in, twenty-nine point seven million dollars going out. And those funds are valid, detail report behind there. And following that is the one forty-three School Nutrition Fund. And again, money in, money out, ten point nine million dollars in revenues, ten point nine million dollars going out. But those are the monthly report.
Board members' questions about the monthly reports. We're going to pick that up as a motion. Motion to approve the monthly reports that have been submitted for March. Motion by Ms. Brogdon to approve is her second. Second by Mr. Parker. Any further comments, questions? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All aye.
Motion carries. We have quarterly reports.
Quarterly reports begin on your packets on page nineteen and run through page thirty-nine. These would be with your approval, the reports that we would carry to County Commission. Again, draw your attention to, uh, the revenue total on page twenty. Again, that shows that we received eighty-five percent of our revenues and revenue from sources. As we flip through the expenditure category, it's on the next several pages. Again, we're looking for those to be, uh, in the range of the third quarter. And again, if you look at most of those, those are the fifty, sixty, seventy percent range. So we're very comfortable with those numbers. You'll get over to page thirty where you'll see our estimated expenditures are sixty-five percent of our budgeted items. So again, very comfortable where those numbers are at this point in time of the year.
There was questions about the third quarter reports. Hearing none is there a motion to approve the third quarter reports for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Brogdon, your second. Second by Mr. Parker. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda under three B two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, budget consideration and adoption.
We go back to make one announcement about, um, quarterly reports as you know, we're, we will begin very shortly, uh, shoring up some of those line items, uh, to make sure that they're balanced and prepared for audit. So, uh, late May, early June, you'll see budget amendments. So we, we move within category mainly, but there may be a few intercategory transfers. Uh, but we'll be getting those numbers ready, uh, to turn into auditors. So as, as the next couple of meetings, you'll see, we'll start seeing several budget amendments to, um, get those line items in appropriate categories where they need to be. In terms of budget, uh, you have had three sessions, uh, for us to look at our proposed budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we looked at, uh, expenditures for a couple of nights. And then last week during your planning session, you had the opportunity to look at revenue numbers. And again, we've received some updated, um, revenue numbers that are very consistent with what we've looked at. So there'll be little to no change in our proposed budget at this point in time. Uh, we do anticipate another state revenue, uh, projection coming in tomorrow. And again, if it's as consistent as what we've seen, I don't want to, uh, make any amendments to the budget. So we're going to go ahead. Presentation to the County Commission Budget Committee, uh, this coming Monday. So with your adoption of our budget this evening, uh, we would be able to make that presentation on Monday. So, uh, now we've reviewed this in the last two or three meetings, but we'll be glad to answer any questions about that as they might occur. The budget highlighted page that we have seen and we've discussed, uh, again, we've corrected a couple of things that just, uh, came to our attention, but I would just like to hit a few highlights without reading through the entire list. Uh, as you'll recall, we have, uh, placed in the budget for the upcoming year, three thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollar raise for all certified employees. A two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollar raise for all classified employees. Uh, there are plans in place for assisting staff as, uh, as we may not have coverage for all of our substitute teachers. Uh, there are a few new certified positions and classified positions mainly related with social emotional needs that our students would have, uh, as they, uh, come to our schools and our classrooms with, uh, more and more challenges each year. Uh, we have talked about, uh, increasing athletic supplement for our athletic coaches. I would remind you that in this budget, there is one of the largest textbook adoptments outside of our English Language Arts, but, uh, our math textbook adoption, uh, is reflected in this budget as well as semester dollars. So you'll see that. Uh, we are adding for safety purposes, uh, half of an SRO position. The, the sheriff has agreed to help us with the other half of that. Uh, we're adding some technical support, uh, to work in the transportation office and work in this office. Uh, one of the things that you had specifically requested was helping principals at the middle and high schools and working through, uh, facility money so that they could improve, um, minor expenditures, minor upgrades to their athletic facilities, uh, both at the middle and high schools. And then, uh, we are also expanding our Grow Your Own program. So, uh, those are all things that we can be proud of. And we're excited to present this budget and with your adoption, we will proudly present that Monday night through County Commission's Budget Committee.
Thank you. Dr. Weeks, board members' questions, comments on the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four school year? Mr. Haley?
I'd rather go last if I was able to go ahead. Anybody else have commented questions on?
I'll go last. Well. You want to go last as a, okay.
I guess I think we need to add more to that teacher raise. I'm not sure where it would come from, but I just think we need to add more.
Okay, how much more will we talk about?
That's, I leave that up to the finance people. As we're sitting around counties that we're losing teachers to.
Is that coming as a proposal? I mean, what, what we presented to us at the last three sessions that we spent anywhere between, I would say at this point, probably five to six hours on was this number and these numbers. Uh, and I think this is, this is certainly, I think we would all like to give teachers a raise and we're doing that, but, but these are the numbers we have talked about and this is the first time that.
Well, I was skipping it the other night too, so.
I've got a proposal in order with that. Whenever it becomes my turn, if I go online and bother, Mr. Phil make the recommendation.
Yeah, that's.
More so where it comes from.
Right.
So, Mr. Chadwick, is there a speci- and I'm about, I'm pressing you on a little bit because if, if there's a specific amount that you're thinking of, because this comes as a recommendation after many months of review and study by Dr. Week and look, looking at it from the finance department, taking a look at it and what they think is feasible. Sure, from the county commission to just every, every, you know, looking at it whole, holistically, what I gather, I'm making this recommendation. And that's what we discussed. So if there's a specific amount, certainly please.
I don't really have a, a specific amount. So you could figure out where some might come from, but.
No, I have suggestions.
I, I just think, again, you know, losing people. And part of it is leaving education for non-education jobs, higher pay and some going places for education jobs and higher pay. We, we need Dixon County needs to do a little, a little better.
Do you want to, right now it's thirty-four fifty-six for certified and twenty-three forty-five for classified. You know, you, do you want to raise it to thirty? I don't know, thirty-six for certified and I'm just throwing out numbers at this point, twenty-five for classified?
Mr. Chairman, can I build on him for a second?
Sure, of course.
I just want to ask, and you may, may or may not be able to give this answer. If you can get close, um, for every, can, can you give a dollar amount of how that raises the budget across the board? Does that make sense? If we, and, and what I'm asking for is if we, if, if what Mr. Chadwick is building on, say it's a five hundred dollars, do we know what five hundred dollars across the board are going to raise our budget when you include our taxes, social security, Medicare and so forth?
We, our benefits package is approximately a seventeen percent add-on to every category when someone accepts benefits. And that, that's an average because people donate any and some people need a lot. So for every hundred dollar increase that we say, you know, give, give someone a hundred dollars, we need to budget a hundred and seventeen dollars for that.
Do you have any idea across the board on what a thousand dollar is worth? Does that make sense? Uh, if we gave every teacher a thousand dollars, just for easy figuring, I'm just asking for a thousand dollars. If we gig on that, times, I guess, however many certified.
Roughly seven hundred teachers.
Okay.
So seven hundred thousand there.
Yeah.
Plus the seventeen.
Seventeen percent on top of that. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, just trying to keep some numbers in my head.
I just. Is there a?
I think my main, my main thing on being on the board here is I'm interested in like curriculum and stuff with teachers. Uh, as far as finances. We've got other people that, that deal in the finance part. But I just think we need to do something, we've got to do something to keep our teachers. So.
Mr. Parker, if I could go back and answer your question. So if, if we gave all certified teachers another thousand dollars where they are, that would be eight hundred and nineteen thousand or salary and benefits.
Mr. Chairman, would you have? I should go and ask my questions first. I apologize for putting you on that position. This amount that's being proposed to thirty-four fifty-six and twenty-three forty-five covers all employees. Dollar figure to make that work. I know y'all probably put something together, but what kind of total money we're looking at there? And you can ballpark and I'm not going to call you tomorrow and tell you a thousand bucks off.
He's a math teacher.
Still use my calculator like.
Does that seventeen percent include social security?
Yes, everything. Yeah. Uh, two, two point one million dollars is around the pool that we.
Two dollars.
Um, and, and again, we, we do that just like we do anytime the state sends money to us. That, that's consistent with what we've done. When, when we see the state sending money to us, you know, we look at what those dollar figures are. We kind of divide that out amongst our, our population that, that would be receiving those benefit.
So two point one million, um, enough to ask you calculate this converted to a percentage for the average employee. I want to speak more and build on what Mr. Chadwick said. Uh, I know we use the word equally generically and there are lots of teachers in this community, first let me say, even our DCA people, that I'm not here to represent teachers. I'm not here to represent employees. I'm here to represent the kids. But representing the kids translates to what's best for them overall. I think we've put not just our teachers, but our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, um, obviously our law members. We've put everybody, taxed everybody over the past few years and I think we've been very frugal about it. When I look and see, and I didn't have the state numbers till last week. Yes, Mr. Vandiver, I agree. We studied this for a few meetings, but the state numbers were a big factor. And mentioning that they may have changed some, I'd be curious if they're not substantial. I'm going to build on what I planned to say, but we're looking at several million dollar increase, um, state funding that would, that could be translated to several things. But I think across the board to the employees in general, if we put a pool of money for the raises, for the increase, we, our cost of living has been higher than we're given this year on what we put in here. for the increase, we, our cost limit has been higher than we're given this year on what we put in here. It, it feels good to say I'm going to give thirty four hundred to a teacher and twenty three hundred to a bus driver, but it costs them more to go to work than that, than it did last year. So thinking of a resolution for that. Another thing I want you to work on, and I know you are working on it, is the pay differential from our senior employees to our, to our junior pay level employees, which will also translate to the non-certified. The only resolution I could come up with was going back to our policy that says that the board will approve the pay scales. And I think when we put that together, we'll be asked to approve it. The last substantial raise we did was eight years ago. I know there's been some increases since then, but the last substantial was ten percent. And the cost then was two point some odd million dollars. I'm thinking, and I'm going to make a proposal that we don't put a dollar amount on the teacher or the, the non-teacher, but we put a percentage of the payroll. And then that goes into the budget, and then whenever you bring us the pay scale, that gives us a time to discuss whether it would go to entry level, senior level, and get a chance to balance that out. So my proposal would be that we ask for more in the budget for the payroll for raises. And I hate to say ten percent because it almost puts a nail in the coffin for that, but with the the obvious fact that, that we're budgeting more, less in the red this year than years before, but our taxes mean it for it. I think we have some margin there. So from a dollar. What is an eight percent across the board going to run us three and a half million?
Eight percent roughly is going to be two point one million.
So this is what we have here.
And again, I hate to say that, Mr. Haley, because when we say eight percent, you know, everybody grabs their paycheck and multiplies it to one point oh eight, and that, that does not work that way. It, it's roughly an eight percent pot of money that we took and then divided that amongst teachers. So we could easily, you know, if you, if you suggest, if you'd suggest, you know, let's, let's go ten percent, let's go eleven percent. We, we can calculate those very easily. We can put that on, you, you give me a number and think.
I'm going to suggest twelve percent. I'm going to suggest twelve percent across the board for the pot of money, not to be translated to twelve percent for employee. But out of that twelve percent, I want to make sure that our non-certified, in my proposal, that it it will at least be the amount that we initially said, twenty three forty five, or up to twelve percent based on the pay scale that would be approved by the board at later date. Dollar wise, it'd be twelve percent.
So roughly, Mr. Haley, and I'm not teaching. That would equate to a five thousand one hundred eighty four dollar raise for certified and a thirty five seventeen for classified.
And what I want that proposal to be is not a dollar amount for them as much as the pot to, to work on this senior employee scale and for us to approve the scale based on that pot of money. I know that's not ready, but I don't need to work on it, but from a dollar standpoint, I'd rather pool the money together.
From the Haley, I'm hearing what you're saying, just to clarify, you're, you're wanting a percentage on a pot of money, but you're not wanting to designate an amount.
We need to approve a new scale that will take care of all of our interest we've talked about the senior.
We're not ready to vote on the budget tonight, then, is what I'm hearing.
I think we're ready to vote on the budget because the dollar back to go in the budget committee.
I don't, well, I guess that's the question. I'm not, I'm definitely not the person to look for.
I would say yes, as long as you give us the flexibility to spread that amongst those categories, knowing that there will be some budget amendments to come from that. I mean, we can calculate the dollar amount increase that that's going to add to the bottom line budget. We can place it in seventy one one hundred teacher line item and seventy one one hundred, one eighty nine other staff line items. And then at sometime later, we can move that to the appropriate categories like special education, like CTE programming.
Based on.
Everybody else, based on that.
Five point one, that the director of the school established a salary rating for each person employed and shall recommend that salary rating to the board for approval, at which time you would take that pot of money and you would walk on that scale from what I've suggested on our senior employees and what you need to compete for the entry level. You bring us a recommendation and then we would approve that pay scale within that pot of money. The budget could still go, that was my goal, was the budget to move forward, and it won't settle just right here.
To me, it's a somewhat a legal question, Mr. Hall. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not, because we're not specifying an amount.
We would specify an amount equal to twelve percent.
Well, but what is it?
They're going to calculate that. They have those numbers.
Look, I'm, I'm good at asking what the stars and the moon, I'm, I'm good at asking for it. I just, it's just, I'll express my concern for training that we go through three or four meetings and this is the first we've heard of it. And that's, that's just, and that's just me expressing a little frustration.
To me, part of the state money didn't come to mind the last Thursday, so get it, we could look at it and see, and I think that's the best balance that we can do to move the budget forward. Yes, we have to approve the budget.
Yes, sir. We do. Mr. Hall, any issue which you're aware legally?
No, as long, as long as we get to a number and put that number in line items that the board understands is going to move between those line items, then, then we're good.
We, we believe if, if this board said add another million dollars to certified salaries, add another half million dollars to classified salaries, we'd, we'd be really close.
Yes, if two point one was an equal number, that'd be, that'd be right. And, and that, that I'm good with. I didn't want to purposefully, John, though, that we docked some of these classifieds, it would give them less proposed. It needs to be at least that, but we do need to adjust that, that scale. And I think it's our opportunity to do it. If we put it off the next year, we won't have nothing to do with. So that would be my recommendation, if you think of one point.
Give us a million, let's go a million one. In addition, let's just say in addition to the budget we have, because I, okay. In addition to the budget we proposed, we, we'd request another one point one million dollars for certified teachers salaries and half million dollars for classified salaries.
That's my proposal. As Mr. Chadwick, if he wants to defer, give the correction.
That's. As the guy in the movie said, I concur.
Dr. Weeks, have you been comfortable with what is being suggested, proposed?
As long as the board understands that's going to affect the bottom line and all the implications, though, it's going to show on paper, dipping a little more into fund balance and all those things. And again, that's a million dollars out of there. I, I have no problem with those amounts, no, I would feel okay with that.
And for the record, on that comment, I agree with you, and that's why I look, we're budgeting four point seven in the red. Last year, we budgeted seven point five in the red. I don't want to come out in black from that. And I, I don't think the state increase in money is going to affect the property tax and the sales, the tax, sales tax if you get unless it goes to M O E's standpoint, are they going to redo our property and sales tax ultimate state increase?
Not over the next, or, well, I'm saying not as long as Governor Lee sitting in his chair, there is no legislation that would do that right now.
I think it's still well within we budgeted last year from what you hear in the red standpoint, and, and we have to budget in the red due to the lack of the increased revenues that we can actually budget when we know they're there. I think it's a very safe number.
And if, if the budget committee sends it back, I mean, we'll come back and review it.
Dr. Weeks, are we safe to say certified positions would be getting over a five thousand dollar raise and classified would be getting over a little?
And worth stepping, isn't it?
Thirty five.
Yeah.
Talking good old.
It's a step neutral. So we, we always, I think before I came here, I think there was some discussion on whether we gave step raises or not. We, we have not, in my tenure as administration, we've never not honored a state raise. I just think that's part of a an ongoing contract. When you move from year two to three, you know what you're going to get. So raises and bonuses are always exclusive of those. So, yes, sir, it's going to be. Mr. Vandenberg?
Yeah, I had a question.
Fifty one eighty four for a teacher and thirty five seventeen for a full-time class.
Somewhere in that range. I said, I said a specific number, but it's somewhere in that range. Clarity. Other questions, comments, thoughts? Any other changes?
Make sure my motion doesn't, while that dollar amount's going to be close, I think we'll see some seniors that may think differently. And with percentage, it helps us grow that, something like that.
You have, is this, you, you said motion, is there a motion to approve the budget based on that? Yes, sir. Other change, other discussion?
What did we, what did we end up doing for the academics, the sports? I know we talked about different things there, what?
Big data high school. And twenty five from the middle, and so those are facilities, and then we did fifteen for equipment, add uniforms, things like that, and seventy five hundred for middle school equipment uniforms.
That's fifteen K for high school.
Equipment, uniforms, and, and again, we've explained to those administrators, there would be some sort of match. We've not defined what that looks like yet, but based on those numbers, we got good. We have shared that with them, and they, they're very excited about that and understand that there is a match through part of that some, to some degree.
Are the numbers we're working off of, the ones we got last week, we know that's been changed, is it correct?
Correct.
Other than what we've changed tonight?
What you did tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Weeks.
Yes, sir. Other questions, thoughts, considerations?
I would say that, and I understand everything's going to change a little bit with those changing in numbers, but we'll get another updated copy, I think, with all that.
We have a copy ready to go to county commission Monday night. Yes, sir, and I'll get it to you soon as, we have that ready.
Other comments, other questions? All right, we've made, with those proposed changes and amendments, is there a motion to approve the proposed twenty three, twenty four budget? Motion to approve. First by Mr. Haley, and here's second, second by Mr. Chadwick. Any further discussion or comments? Thank you all for your work, I'll say that, and Dr. Weeks and Ms. Frazier, same, same to you all.
Ms. Frazier and her department have done an excellent job, and I will, I will say it, it's not just a finance budget, it's certainly not the director's budget. We, we meet in depth with every principal, every department head, we listen to their concerns, we balance their concerns off and put that budget together and compose that for you, and we feel very comfortable with that. And again, thank you for those additions tonight, and we will, I assume, we'll just go.
We have a motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, go call home, please.
Mr. Vandenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All I.
Motion carried. I, I needed to make a declaration that the fact that, that my wife is employed through the school system does not impact my vote, to admit a vote based on many discussions and considerations and thought, and I want to make that declaration. Mr. Chadwick makes the same declaration, Mr. Parker.
Same way.
I will too.
And Mr. Underwood. I think we all have some, some family involvement in our school system, which is a good thing. We'll move on to the next agenda item unless there's other comments.
Well, there's just, there was a reminder, the county mayor's budget request calendar, May first, budget presentation to the budget committee. May fifteenth, follow-up with budget committee, June fifth, if those meetings go as needed, to be public here on the budgets on June fifth.
What time is the Monday night?
Monday is six o'clock, six or six thirty, I believe, I have it down for six.
Six, six A, six P M. We might be there for it until six A, six P M. So we'll go, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is three C, maintenance, maintenance report. You all should have received maintenance report. Any comments, thoughts, or questions?
For members, per request, I was asked to ask of the maintenance department a list of items that were greater than thirty days old. And so the link that you have on page forty in your book reflects items that have not been able to be resolved in the last thirty days. Again, I talked to Mr. Cliff and then Ms. Elizabeth, a lot of these are parts needed to be ordered, or you see several roofing type items, and again, we're working on roofs as quickly as we can and when the weather allows us to do so. So that list is prepared for you.
Comments on the maintenance report? All right, here you go, Mr. Cliff, and thank you for your work, or, or, and your department. Under three C, two, school facility discussion.
For members, at your last planning session, there was discussion from Hewlett Spencer and LaFitt Martin, and I think you either have with you, beside you, or I would refer to the fat graphics on the wall that someone just discussed. There was, I, I came out of that meeting with two questions, and I think if you're prepared to give more direction, I think we've given a brief direction. But I think LaFitt Martin and Hewlett Spencer have asked us, number one, do we want to continue having them draw a two-story building or a three-story building on the campus of Charlotte Middle School? And do we, I want to talk about a transition program for New Directions Academy and that Northwest wing, or do we want to look at something with those two older facilities that were left over from New Directions? So if the board wants to take any action on either of those, the thing, then we could give them some clarity.
Board members, question, Mr. Parker?
You know, I seen the three-story, and I thought, man, that looks really good. And Mr. Haley talks about his comments on the numbers, I thought that third story is ridiculous. Mr. Chairman talks about future CTE space, and I thought, you know, that, that makes even better sense. I really don't know. I think that if the CTE does bring its way to our member schools, our member schools are going to have to have room. And that's the only thing I think that's keeping this third story in my mind. While we're, I, I, I'm not sure that, that every school won't have to have room for CTE. Only for middle schools that we, as we trickle that down to the, to the younger grades, so I'm really, I'm really not sure what's best in that. If, if New Directions ever moves to a central location in the county, it does open up a whole lot of room, maybe, maybe that wing that we're talking about back here in the back could be a whole CTE built. I don't, it could be an option too. That would, that would entail moving NDA somewhere else also. But it was a good point, Mr. Vandenberg, about the, the room for CTE, and, and I think now it's time to save the room wherever we decide to save it. I don't know when we're going to need the CTE room. And if we do need it, will we have a plan for NDA to move out? Maybe that could be the two hundred seats that, that we need for that. Just to comment on something I mulled over for a while after I left, back and forth on it, I don't, I don't know which way it fits.
Mr. Underwood?
I've got a question. I need a clarification. We, we had to make these drawings to beat these existing buildings here to the south for NDA. And that was, that was our recommendation to, or that was the recommendation to us that we could put NDA there. Then Lewis comes in and says that won't hold your NDA. So I need to know, is, is Lewis Group right, or is our? Or is our administration right? Or what am I missing there?
Let me clarify your question. When you said Lewis Group, Lewis Group was the group who did the overall.
I'm sorry, well, Lyle Cook Martin, they brought the, the extra with, yeah, bail construction in there. They're saying, they talked to our employees and said, there's no way that with what you've recommended here to put NDA in will work. So, so who's right?
In, in, in coupling what they told us about the plumbing that was gonna be necessary at those two south buildings and with the HVAC system, I'm in total agreement with what I've seen.
I understand that, but they were looking more at capacity in these two buildings. Is there the capacity in there, as we were told, to take care of the NDA or not? Or are they right?
I think sometimes we get our minds focused on doing exactly what we're doing now.
Yeah.
In a different space. And if we were to do exactly what we're trying to do today, obviously, we're not, we don't have a gym space. Obviously, we don't have large classroom space. We don't have eight spaces for elementary, eight spaces for that. I think when we first made that recommendation, we were thinking out of the box a little bit, trying to think, how can we modify the programs offered at New Direction to be a little different than they are now? So I, I think if you went and asked every employee today.
Which is kind of what they did.
Which I think is what they did, yes, sir. And when they brought that coupled with how expensive it was gonna be to keep those two buildings, I might immediately said, well, you guys have done a lot more study than we have on what it would take to do that. And I would hate to do this forward, put
Yeah.
the money into.
I think it's, I'm with you. I think it's, it's throwing the money away. However, with this extra space here to the northwest in that, that's a total of ten, ten rooms.
Ten classrooms.
And so that is a lot more than what we, what we have allotted for in these two buildings that they're saying won't work in that space, right?
Yes.
So we've actually got more space here than, than we really need. However, the way it's configured to be able to block that off is just almost a perfect fit.
Right. And again, I, I don't think that precludes us from, like Mr. Haley suggested, you know, looking at other spaces in the city of Dixon or around Dixon that are more centralized for our families. You know, to do that, and again, that would, that would, I think, make the objective of this board, which was to get more classroom space at Charlotte Middle School. And I think it, I think it would be an overall improvement to our system to get that program more centrally located, but.
That's Charlotte County seed.
I thought Vander was the center of the universe.
It is, I'm buying it.
And, and again, I think we have, we, we have a couple of years, I mean, the anticipated opening day, fall twenty-five. So I mean, I think we have plenty of time to look and continue to, to study that. And if this board's not prepared to, to make a decision on two or three stories this evening or complete demolition, we're, we're not at, at a crisis point where we have to make some decisions to give them directions. Because, you know, Fred's here with you where he was last week, and, you know, I think it's just a matter of a little more on top of that.
I think, I think that Northwest corner is great, and from, I, I think I'm with you, from what I understand, Mr. Weeks is, is worth going. That's just cheap horsepower, to put another.
I think that's what Jamie said, that, that would be the most economical per dollar per square foot to, to add on to our facilities. When, when they're already there, they're already mobilized.
It's, it's, it's easy, it's cheaper to build one more story up than it would be to site prep and do, do everything at a different location.
Mr. Underwood, can I add on to what you're saying and what Mr. Parker's saying?
Well. Not to mine, okay? Yeah, I'm just.
You know, we're looking at potentially a CTE building over Creekwood. And if that program, if that portion of the building advances, and we've got the same thing going at the middle school, that could progress, I just think it, it would be a great transit, and I think we need the room for that. So I continue to.
Well, Mr.
Frasier for bringing it up. It was her idea, not mine, so I'll be clear on that. I think it's, I think it's, I get the calls. And I'll second your thoughts on it's a least expensive square footage to add another story, so.
Mr. Vandiver, I do not think that you will find a more or a better proponents of the CTE as, as me and, and Mr. Aaron, so.
I agree with you.
Thank you for your comment.
Other thoughts? So what's the will of the board? Are we ready to move forward, give more defined direction to Lyle Cook Martin, to potentially Hewlett Spencer, give them some direction? Mr. Haley?
Add the, the debate for the two-story aspect. I think if you go three-story, that you're basically making that back plot a permanent option to school. That I think ultimately in years to come, simple location will be better. I don't think we're in a position to do that now. I don't think we're in a position to debate the best place forward. I think the options are kind of unlimited. But I think by putting a third story out, that you, that you believe that it's there forever. I do agree with CTE, I fully support it. And I think by the time that program were to, to require the additional space, we would have that plot for it and go in a different direction for the current school. If we didn't, I think CTE itself has some good debate discussion on programming. Because I think especially if you put much lab space, workspace, or call it for the CTE program, you're, you're doing a block schedule for that, and you're busting from the middle school to Creekwood, Hughesville facilities. I, I don't think you'll ever have a situation for middle school happening, lab or workspace room like you would for high school, if you walk into a classroom type thing. I think it just gives us more options, I believe, too.
Other thoughts, considerations? I just, I mean, I, I just. I, I, I think I disagree. I know I disagree, and I, I think this board's charge is to look towards the future and plan, and I consider what we're doing is planning, and we're looking at it, we're trying to. You can't put another, I think it's what, five, six classrooms for the dollar figure that we can do it for now. Not, so it's, it just makes a lot of sense. To me, it opens up options. We can have a CTE program there, we can keep NDA there, there's a multitude, but if we're gonna limit ourselves, it's all mine. When we get an opportunity to expand it, does it?
Any, any study on the growth in that part of the county? I mean, I came down Hayshed Road a couple of weeks ago, and there were fifteen houses being, well, built in the last year or under construction now, or just on Hayshed Road. Not, not any of the side roads coming off of Hayshed.
They're all, they're all old people. That's what Lewis groups.
I think we're.
There's a lot going up since the Lewis Group is here.
We're, we're, we're addressing.
So I'm, I would.
We're doing a knee-jerk reaction sometimes. We're, Charlotte, it'd been nice to have hit it when it wasn't at ninety plus. Uh, we're gonna start doing that more and more unless we're telling it. And let me say the, the word that no one wants to say is, who knows, we may have to rezone and not give the space. So who knows when we might have to do that or may not, hopefully we won't. But it's, it, again, it opens up options, so.
I mean, I think the third story is quite usable.
Other thoughts? Mr. Parker?
What, what, yes, what, what do they need from us to stack the other story on top or not? Other than that? That's the only thing they need to know to move forward.
We don't have to make that decision tonight. I mean, it just gives them direction. In, in speaking with the mayor again, I think he would like our proposal, again, we just, you know, we need to be making plans. Building, uh, budget numbers, and so we can get to the county commissioners in that time.
So, Mr. Parker, let me be blunt, we need to give them an answer. Because we're trying to stay on track, and we're, we're also considering potentially Dixon Elementary. I don't know if there's gonna be enough dollars left, who knows, but we need a direction from them to say, okay, here's what you may have left, here's what you can, you are not do. So I would say they need an answer to keep moving this crane down the truck.
I guess, I, I'm not, I would not architect, but I would think it can drop in three stories. And if we decide we don't want to, just take one off, drop right there a little bit, right? I mean, I might be wrong, or maybe they could drive with two stories, then we could just stack it up on top of that.
They gave us a draw.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's what I'm, I guess I don't know what board, probably doesn't have all this. It's not like, it's a thick site plan at all, or anything like that.
The footprint stays the same.
Yeah, footprint will play the same, maybe work around it till next month, I don't know. I'm still, I'm still.
What's the will of the board? Do we want to take action tonight?
If we got time, I'd, I'd sleep on it for a month. If we got time.
Any other, any other consideration? Forget until September, apparently.
You're free to know it.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right.
I'll, I'll be whatever more wants to say, if they want to stay on a little bit, they can, if they want to vote, do that too.
Well, let's put it this way, I'm asking for a motion. Is there a motion to move forward? Three-story proposal that was made by Lyle Cook Martin on our last meeting of some four, five, or six, or seven meetings that we've had.
Make a motion table to next month.
We have a motion by Mr. Haley to defer it, sir, to defer until next month. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Parker, any further discussion?
No discussion, okay.
No, we're deferring.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Any further discussion on the motion to defer? Hearing none, who's all in favor of the motion can say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, I'm opposed, motion carries. All right, we will, we'll take about a five-minute for it, please. We'll start with, uh.
Item three D, three D technology.
Uh, for members, if you'll look in your, uh.
Three C.
It's on page forty-one. Uh, Mr. Cliff has, we're working toward getting rid of all the portals that we can. We have four portable units at Dixon Elementary, one at Oakmont, one especially at Office, three at Dixon Middle, and one at Charlotte Middle that we are ready to declare surplus. And, uh, we'll work on getting the, uh, moved and transferred if you would be willing to declare those as surplus, non-invasive items tonight.
Four members, you have heard the request, uh, any discussion, Mr. Haley?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Haley, is there a second?
Second.
Thinking by Mr. Chadwick, thank you, got you, Mitch Parker, any other discussion on this request? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vanver.
Yes.
With Robden.
Yes, Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Motion carries, next on the agenda, under 3D Technology Approval Bid. Um, oh, excuse me, I apologize, under 3B4, um.
Coming around to you is an item, uh, that, uh, you had asked us to look at at our planning session last week. And, uh, we have had conversation with SG, SCG Field. They have, uh, told us that they can prepare two tennis courts. And again, this was our suggestion, uh, I guess a year and a half or so ago, that we go with two courts. You see their proposal to us, uh, it would be on the same location where our current, uh, area has been graded and scraped there. Uh, you see the bulleted list of items that they would take care of down there. And, uh, the two-court price would be four hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. You're probably thinking the same thing I thought, well, can I get four courts times twice the money? And answer was a quick note, uh, if I go where all of that, um, field land was and the field dirt from that old field house that was torn down and left there. Uh, the only thing that they would feel comfortable doing now is the two courts on that location. And people recall, that's why we did not go back with the four courts at that same location, because of the unknown costs. They believe they can put those two courts in at four thirty-nine, four hundred. And, uh, we do need to add, uh, up to ten thousand additional dollars to carry off. Spoiled is the word from it, so the, the stuff that they dig out that is of no value, is not topsoil, that we don't need. Uh, we don't know that it's necessarily ten thousand dollars, but a, a rough estimate of that was an additional ten thousand dollars to take care of that. Uh, so.
On, on bullet point number two, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Instead of having that onsite, that would be offsite.
We, we need to get rid of that.
I agree.
Trash oil, contaminated soil, whatever it is.
On, on that note, Dr. Weeks, I mean. The original issue was the, it's probably been buried there and the settling and just the long-term effects. What assurances do we have an issue in the future?
I, I don't know that anybody's going to assure us anything other than, I'm going to say the quality of their workmanship. Because when, when we first talked to them about doing this, I think if we were working with somebody that did not have that caliber of integrity, I think anybody could probably gone in there and scraped some soil around and dug around a little bit and paved an asphalt portal there. But when they, when they continued to come to us and say, we're not going to put our name on that, we're, we're not going to build of that quality or lack of quality. That, that's not a hard answer, but that's a, I, I think that's a workmanship and an integrity answer. And.
I'm just looking at, and I, I'm one hundred percent for building tennis courts. I, I, I just have a concern with that location and there's an, there are exclusions on the back. That talks about, uh, the following excluded from current contract scope, dis-mobilization. Then number two is removal and replacement of unstable or unsuitable subgrade materials into a form of chemical modification to unstable or unsuitable subgrade material unless otherwise specified above. Soils and material testing. So, again, it's, yeah, it's just, it's just concerning, uh, because of that location. I, I don't know how to express it anymore than that. We, so, another concern, I'm sorry, I apologize, folks, but twenty years down the road, we decide, another board decides to build another two tennis courts because that property is there. There's no historical record, uh, there needs to be a historical record that a field house was buried. And it's probably not good to use the rest of that area to build another two tennis courts, so. Anyway. Those are my concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
Parker.
I guess. And I've heard the controversy of these tennis courts, what was the reason for them being torn down in the first place?
There was a, a significant crack, I'm going to say three to four inch crack that is still operating. Uh, and, um, they, they basically, again, there, there was an issue of can we repair it by putting some sort of epoxy filler in there? Might have held up another year or two, but we wanted to do it right. And when we had them dig those up, then that's when we ran into the issue of the soil, they started doing soil. Wouldn't go any further unless we did some soil testing for them, that's where we got into, um, the added cost of digging and scraping off the wall.
Because a field house was buried underneath.
Yeah, so basically with.
Well, what else to tell you? I mean, that's it.
Another concern is the, um, this furnished install, ten-foot tall, live valve, chain link fencing. If you flip it over and look, it's explosion number sixteen, it's no fencing included in the pricing.
We still have the fencing there from where we.
Okay.
Toward.
So no fencing material is included in this price because we still have the existing.
We, we may have some additional costs for fencing, but I think they can probably work around it, but we've preserved that area to the extent possible. This is just the work that they would do. I think when we had originally talked about it, we'd also talked about some additional, um, pavilion-type seating, some covered-type seating, some other areas like that to make it park-like, I would say.
Mr. Chairman.
I agree with you, the, um, but I want to add something else too, and I, I've talked to a few surrounding communities that have tennis programs, I've talked to the ones here. Quite intentionally, I didn't, I didn't want to get a negative opinion. But, uh, we need to address the tennis courts, we need to address the track, we need to address a fifty-year-old aging facility. And it's not a budget item, it is a, a, uh, list that we need to work on putting together for the county commission for projects that need to be done. It's our responsibility, whether it's done tomorrow, a year or three years from now, but I think it needs to be included in a big program. Largely because every system I've talked to says if you build two tennis courts, it should be playing tennis max till three in the morning. And that you won't have any competition because people won't come and play on two tennis courts, there's more wait time and downtime than there is competition time. And I think we're really just patting ourselves on the back. I, I didn't have a written consent report, but I've seen it. I haven't had one recommendation to do two from people in tennis programs. I think the people that, that are pushing for it understand the limits. I don't think we can go put a parking lot tomorrow, I don't think putting by that school is the direct answer. But I think redoing that fifty-year-old facility, bringing up the speed, it can be incorporated in some parts, make it work. And I'd rather us address it as a whole, as to do something that someone will build on later. There will be a problem later that won't even suffice for the need. Needs to happen, I agree.
Other thoughts? Mr. Parker.
Are you saying it doesn't need to happen at that location? If we can't put four there, is it another location?
I don't know that, I'm not an engineer, but I'd like to know, there might be something they can do to help stabilize the foundation. The cost might be less and cost moving electricity poles, I love that conversation with some of them, but they go out and buy the ocean, we're staying there today, that's staying. I don't know what we think to do with foundation for a tennis court, it may be nine hundred and fifty thousand or two, two million. But I don't know that they're not answered there, but it may not beat that site. But if we're going to do something that's not going to suffice for competition, we need to look at it as kept that way for the entire complex. And it might fit in somewhere else. Might be, if we did redo that little field, that tennis courts might do well, those five campuses.
For the. I think when the board dealt with this last, probably two, three years ago, we were approaching the one million dollar amount for four courts. Uh, and still no assurance that we were not going to have to continue to dig deeper. So I think that's when the board tabled it and said, let's stop for right now. Planning system made me think at least.
Up recent to the big problem I can say. We look down here on this side of the complex, but i- if we do ever decide to redo a multi-use field, it does free up an area with those bathrooms and a softball field. Maybe there are some other ways to look.
Other comments, Mr. Underwood, anything?
Appreciate that insight.
Anyone else? Want to table this for another discussion date and be brought back up?
It probably needs to be, needs to be discussed later, but I'm not sure if a two-court would be, I don't know if we have all that.
I took any action on this, uh. Hearing none, Dr. Weeks, thank you for the work, thank you for taking the time to do that. Certainly, certainly it, it, it is a priority, but there are many, and it's one that we need to, as Mr. Haley said, move forward on and and take action maybe in its entirety. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is 3D Technology, 3D One Approval Bids.
Page forty-three in your packet, uh, the technology department has, uh, solicited a quote for two, uh, Dell servers. And you see two of those at twenty-four thousand eight seventy-five, and another piece of information there from, uh, from Dell CTO, uh, at eighteen thousand. So the total package sixty-seven, seven fifty for the technology department from D D W D. And this is within their.
Four members' questions about the proposed bids on those server items. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make the motion.
The motion by Mr. Underwood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley, any further discussion?
New equipment that, uh, will help expand our capabilities, the storage, storage space. Um, Ben's not here tonight, I don't believe, so we'll get an exact detail and everything. Scott is here, if you'd like to hear from Scott.
There's been.
Mr. Lewis, any?
Um, it reflects existence. It's our, uh, work machine. Which basically, what everything.
We probably need those.
And they're eight years old.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other question?
Day.
Other questions, comment? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vanver.
Yes.
Miss Brogdon.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Motion carries, next under, on the agenda, under 3D Human Resources in the monthly report.
Four members, you'll see on page forty-four in your packet, uh, the latest HR report, uh, retirement, that's Patty Post. Patty is here this evening, congratulations, Miss Post. Uh, your students did well math contest, thank you for carrying them, uh, math teachers are hard to find. And Patty has, uh, known her name since I've been here, and she's been an exemplary teacher. We thank you for your work, thank you for serving Dixon County High School and Dixon County School. Uh, you see various resignations, leaves of absence, non-renewals, powers transfers, assignments and reassignments. And four members, uh, I'm going to go ahead and announce as of three-thirty this afternoon, have permission from the HR department to do so. Uh, Principal Christie Shealy has announced that after thirty-three years, uh, she is going to be going home. Uh, we are going to miss her tremendously. So, uh, she's announced her retirement, we are excited for her and her future, but we're, um, she is our senior principal.
Board members' comments on the Human Resources Report?
The, uh.
Mr. Chadwick.
Second from the bottom, Andrew Scott. District teacher to CTE counselor. Uh, that, is that, that's considered a staff position?
Yes, sir, the CT career counselors are those that are required by that ISM grant that we received, um, back in February, February or March. And so that is a, that is a requirement for us to receive the, the CT monies that the grant had provided to us. We must have that position, uh, one at both of our high schools.
Is there one at Dixon?
There will be, is that right, Mrs. Hall?
Angela.
Oh, top of the next page, top of page forty-five.
Okay.
It's just a comment, does matter, I guess, notice that Ms. Turk is a, she was a school counselor. Mr. Scott was a history teacher. Do we not have any other counselors or? Or is it just offering full teaching, the counselor job?
Mr. Parker, our, our process is when we post a job that is available, um, it's posted for a period of time, and so the, the supervisor who managed that program interview all the candidates. Uh, we interview every candidate from within the system, and then we selectively interview candidates from outside of the, um, Mr.'s account. And the principal interviewed the candidates, and they make recommendations to the HR department. HR department reviews those and brings those to my desk, I review the recommendations, and we, we appoint people based upon those recommendations.
I guess I, my question was, I guess I thought a counselor needed a counselor's degree, license.
A, a school counselor does, yes, sir, a CT counselor is not a formal school counseling position.
Thank you.
These are new, new positions.
Yes, sir, those are required by the, the grant money that the governor has given us.
Do we have a job description?
Yes, sir.
That's on, that's on 4D. That's our, that's another item on our agenda. Other questions about the Human Resources Monthly Report? Hearing none, Miss Post, thank you for your service, we very much appreciate it, thank you. Four members will move on to the next agenda item under, uh, 3H, uh, one, student service, special permission.
Permission will be in your packet, Dixon County High's FFA to camp limits, that's their summer camp. Uh, Creekwood High School, JROTC, cassette cadet leadership training in Greenville, Kentucky, six thirty-ten June. Uh, Dixon County High School's UCA Summer Cheer Camp, uh, that is at the University of Alabama. And those are the three requests that we've had this.
Four members' questions about the special permission? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the special permission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Thinking of Miss Brogdon, any further discussion?
I think it.
Any opposed, motion carries. Second reading, passing down those policy, those policy changes, or second reading. Mr. Hall.
Board members, um, the last meeting, we made some changes to one point four oh three, if you'll recall, which is the agenda. And I sent those out earlier, I failed to include one additional line, and the one I sent out earlier, the, the one I'm passing out now has the new line in it. But if you'll recall, uh, we wanted to, um, add a definition for who the public was, or who would be allowed to speak on the agenda. And so, uh, we took care of that by, uh, defining public as being residents of Dixon County or the parent or guardian of a student attending school in district that's in lines eighteen and nineteen. Immediately preceding that, we also deleted those two sentences that are covered in the one point four oh four policy now. Immediately preceding that, we also deleted those two sentences that are covered in the one point four oh four policy now. Um, and then we also made the change, uh, from comment or must denote to shall denote. And then the other change that, that didn't make it into the first, uh, email you got from me. That's begins on line thirty-eight, which, uh, gives the chair the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who's disruptive or does not adhere to the rule. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Questions about the proposed policy one point four zero three under agendas? Mr. Haley?
It's clerical, top. Just wording. Starting on line seventeen after the red line, meaning it's agenda. The agenda for regular meeting, however, however, shouldn't be there. It was in the old consensus that carry on.
Yeah.
But the agenda for every meeting shall ordinarily allow.
Yeah.
I think that whole paragraph needs to be moved down with, needs to be moved down, um, below where you have red line number twenty-nine and be the intro to line thirty-one. The commenter shall denote the, uh, because it kind of all goes together.
What I, what I hear saying is take from beginning at line seventeen and move that from line seventeen to line twenty.
Thirty.
Oh, from line.
Seventeen through twenty-one, just move the whole three or four lines down to.
To line thirty.
Thirty. After that, any more member.
Okay.
The thing is fifteen, it's part of the same paragraph by essence. When you read it a hundred times, I'm sure you don't catch that. It's.
Yeah.
Do so.
Other proposals, Mr. Parker?
When we're defining the public, you know, uh, I like every, how we're defining the public. The only thing that. That, that go to school. What about, and I, I don't want to leave anybody out that needs to be able to speak. What about a, a employee that does live in the county? And that's, I just don't want to, I don't know if, how it not happened, or it could be an employee that, you know, in a surrounding game that, you know, comes to work for us and maybe they want to speak on whatever. I don't want anybody to be left out that needs to be left out. And we, as, as the chairman said before, we don't want anybody that's from Bagington County coming over here and just making trouble, you know? So, uh.
So, so here's, so here's, here's. I think we could, we could say what if multiple times. I mean, we said it fun enough. Here's the thing, this board, if we want to hear from Mr. Williams, and he lives in Henry County, but happens to work here, uh, Mr. Williams lived in Dickman County, but I'm using an example. This board has the ability to say, we want to hear from Mr. Williams, and we won't make an exception here from Mr. Williams. And we could do the same thing from, for someone else. There's, there's some discretion built in, but having mineral policy, which, you know, premise, here, this is from where we start.
If we can add them in there, then I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Hall. You're good with that?
Yeah.
You can tell you want to put the agendas on the way off.
Yeah.
Is the, is the will of the board to approve it on second reading with the change Mr. Haley suggested then?
That's what we're going to get ready. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve one point four zero three with the proposed change?
Prove with the clerical changes.
We have a motion in the second by Mr. Underwood. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is one point four zero four. Mr. Hall?
And one point four zero four stayed the same as it was, uh, from last meeting. There were no changes. Last meeting, so it's for final approval on the second, on the second reading.
There will be by Mr. Haley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brogdon. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Vandiver.
Ms. Brogdon? Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All odds.
Motion carries under, next on the agenda, item number four B, inclement weather day issue or use.
Board members, particularly for those of you who are new to the board, uh, each year we have the opportunity to stockpile days based upon going for thirty additional instructional minutes with students. Uh, for the last, uh, several years, we have taken advantage of the stockpile rule. And we have, we have students attend that extra thirty minutes every day of school. And that allows us to bank up to thirteen snow days or inclement weather days. Uh, we take three of those days and use those for professional development activities for our staff, which is lead, which leaves us ten days to use for inclement weather of various sort. Uh, the Commissioner of Education, uh, as we get to this time of the year, and I know none of us can predict weather, but I don't think any of us are going to predict any more snow. But, um, we don't think there will be, you know, maybe more than a day or two if we ever had to take inclement weather for spring storms or anything like that. Uh, but the commissioner usually allows us to request to use one of those days for, and change one other day to professional development day. And Ms. Adams have, uh, presented the, one day, May eleventh, and use that for, uh, the, the various items that are outlined underneath the bullet, bulleted points or the middle points. Uh, you see elementary plans, secondary plans, and CTE plans on the back. Uh, Ken, each, uh, each division, elementary and secondary divisions will be responsible for those plans. Um, we had looked at several days. Uh, we, we did not want this to be a Friday or Monday, just to be a long weekend. Uh, we talked to all of our principals about activities that, where there might be some conflict. And we, we look for that commonality. And so they have recommended May eleventh. So again, that would take one of our five unused snow days for request permission from the Commissioner of Education to use one of those days as an additional professional development day for teachers. Ms. Adams, Dr. Fair, have anything to add to that?
Well, would add, we are considering scout here. Opportunities for staff within. And we, we think the day is especially important for our math teachers because they're getting that new curriculum that they're going to put their hands on, their own pieces. So we hope to, please publish your schedule. If the day is approved, to provide that professional development for teachers.
And Ken, just so we're clear, if the board approves this, this is not a change of our calendar tonight. We have to go to the Commissioner of Education and request this change, which usually is very responsive to requests from Dixon. So, uh, that would be, we would make that request in the morning if so, and then make any announcements that would affect calendaring upon our receipt of confirmation.
Four members' questions about the request to use inclement weather days, specifically May the eleventh, been requested. Mr. Parker?
Day of the week is bad. You said about a Monday or Friday. So all, all kids stay home. All staff goes to work.
Other questions or comments, thoughts?
I've got a lot of, uh, getting back to last time we did that, a lot of people with childcare issues and, uh, it, uh, I think I got more negative than I did the first time, second time where I'm thinking just create some habits in some of the families. And while I hate to not support it, I, I don't know that the staff development event is going to outweigh the kids not being in school. They all do the spot all days together for the weather. That's negative feedback.
Other comments, thoughts? I mean, this is coming from the, from both, the CTE program specifically is being asked by Dr. Parkner and Ms. Adams. I think they thought this through, and I think it's something that they planned, and it's something that, uh, I think served us well last year. It's a good, a good planning. And I think we're at least getting it enough time that parents can, can plan ahead. Um, again, inclement weather could happen tonight. This is a planned, scheduled scenario. And obviously, if we're having to go to the commissioner, it's not taken lightly. I think it deposits me overall. Other questions, comments, thoughts? What's the will of the board? I will make a motion to, uh, move forward with using the inclement weather day as requested on the form from May, excuse me, May the eleventh, or second to the motion. Right? I guess the motion fails for lack of a second. Any other considerations? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item under four C, the ESER protocol.
Call order, page two. So on page fifty-four, uh, our ESER three, public plan for the remaining fund. Uh, Dr. Collins has worked to prepare this document. Uh, this is required by the state for the grant funding. We are required that the board reviews this and that it be posted on our website. You know, Dr. Collins, would you like to address that or?
Yes, for our, but our ESER funds, this will contribute for six months. So this is the second time for this school year. You can see, um, we're planning to buzz out for ESER two. And you are for twenty twenty-three. So that's, yeah, ESER three funds that I'm going to be able to spend through July.
Four members, other, are there questions on the, uh, ESER protocol approval? Collins, thank you. Four members' questions of Dr. Weeks or questions of Ms. Collins or your motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
The motion by, by Ms. Brogdon to approve the ESER protocol. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vandiver?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All odds.
Motion carries. Next, the agenda is item four D, Review of Job Descriptions. And board members, I think Dr. Weeks had circulated those. I think he has extra copies in the advantage of having them like me. Uh, I need to bring them with me. Sir? Anyone else?
Yes, please.
Anyone else? Well, Dr. Weeks?
Uh, board members, there was a quick request that last week's plan system to take a look at all of the job descriptions for those individuals that were in this year's budget. Uh, you'll see, probably the pages aren't numbered, a board certified behavior analyst, a behavior interventionist, the transportation technical assistant, as the support of students support specialist, CTE career counselor, high school CTE dual enrollment facilitator, the jobs for Tennessee graduates, staff, behavioral interventionist assistive coordinator. And not included in this packet was, you received a media, uh, media specialist that was emailed to you, I believe, in the packet. Communication specialist. Apologize for that not being in this packet. We printed these before that.
Give back the copy. If you need a copy, would you like a copy? He doesn't have a few.
Yes. Yeah. Whenever we get ready to go through with the staff.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, the souls. Uh, questions? Yes, sir. We're gonna take a break. Just take a five minute. Uh, questions, yes, sir. We're gonna take a break. Just take a five minute. But we were on item four D, review of job descriptions, and we had been handed out the proposed job description that we had approved the, uh, we had approved the dollars to, so you know, as an expenditure for these job descriptions, you think new jobs. So, Dr. Weeks, anything else to add?
Uh, no, sir. Again, these are, these are coming, some are possibly most little things, you'll see the title, because they were thin. Many of these are especially department. Uh, and again, I would say just because we have a job description doesn't mean we're ready to post and hire for that job and.
All right, questions about the new job description? New position?
Could I make a suggestion?
Mr. I would.
Can we move that to a work session so we can kind of go over those together and, and make sure the board understands exactly what, what the views, what we're doing here? That's my proposal.
Well, as much as we've, they've been approved, which I have an expenditure, again, I guess I'd defer to Mr. Hall as far as, from a budgetary standpoint. Control, any issue with that, referring it more?
Well, I mean, the.
Move to a work session.
I, I mean, I, I, I assume you all can discuss, you know, whatever you want in a work session. The positions have been included in the budget tonight and.
Or any, any legal issues, that's why I'm concerned.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Some of these positions, you, we might have several people looking to fill these positions and so is the board asking us not to fill these positions? If we're way on a work session, I don't think we have one scheduled for May, maybe June before we reviewed these. And we might, i- if they're internal news, we might lose teaching candidates that will be filling those positions. If they're external news, we might lose candidates for some of these.
The, it not, I mean, I'd just refer back to the, the board's policy on job descriptions. It says the board will approve the broad purpose and function of the position in accordance with state law and approve a statement of duties as recommended by the director and delegate the director of the task of writing or causing to be written in job descriptions or positions. So, I mean, I guess the board's purpose is to prove the broad purpose and function of the position.
So, board members, are there, what's the will of the board? Do we want to? I think we've had. Well, we've, we were emailed the job descriptions. I guess the fault is to move forward with them or not move forward with them at this, at this meeting.
I'd like to understand the positions better before I approve, is what I'm saying. So if we need to schedule a work session, I'm fine with that. But if the board wants to move on, that's fine too. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Other comments by board member?
I don't see real issues with the description. I glanced over them. I didn't get them emailed up this afternoon. I'm not sure if sent, but it, I had to glance through it. So, we can do, I don't know why we don't do a work session every month. I know there's not one scheduled for May, but if we need to have one, we may be discussing budget or something for now and then. It may be a special coffee. A lot can happen the next few weeks, but I think we can do that if we want to. If not, we can discuss it in May. I think there's still time at that point.
I have no, I have no problem with the work session. That's been great for me. I like doing them anyways.
Probably got third floor.
Yep, almost third floor.
Any other comments by board members? There a motion to approve the job descriptions or any other motion? I'm hearing that we want to have a work session. This is Dr. Weeks. I don't think they want to take any action tonight. Or on the job descriptions, is there a date that we might have a work session in May?
We do for graduation, can the girls come back for that?
I bet they were clearly going to do that.
I'm good any Thursday, people, it's twenty.
I think whatever date you pick, it needs to be considered even potential budget discussions also, because I think that is a likelihood that we may have to discuss some of that at some point, and it's usually the case in the month of May. I'm flexible on my days. I'll make it work except for May fifth, and then I'm good.
Are you concerned about what?
Not concerned what the.
Evolution might do with our.
Probably have pushes, we should be able to prepare to add them.
I see. Dr. Weeks, any proposed date in May?
Um, send them forward to not only me, but on a Wednesday. Correct. I can't do the seventeen, eighteen, thirteen.
I'm flexible.
May the fourth, Thursday?
Just at the end of the year.
Right.
Sorry.
I'm not gonna make you fringe of this comment, but you know, we've, is there any issue with even looking at the potential of a like Saturday morning or something to that effect? I'd be open if others were.
I'll just be direct with you. My Saturdays in May are pretty well.
Understake.
Very occupied for graduations.
I'm good, fourth, eleven, eighteen. What does he mean?
I can't read. We've done lunch sessions before.
Seventeen.
Pitching for ideas.
Let's do the seventeen.
What about the ten?
I'll just activate Thursday. May the second, which is next Tuesday.
Start going.
On any day, practice.
How about a early morning work session? Such as, uh, seven thirty?
Depends on the day.
What day?
May the third, Wednesday, next Wednesday at, uh, seven thirty?
You know, I got time to do my hair, but then it'd be good to come over if you need.
If we're looking at seven thirty eight M on May third, Mr. Hall, any concern about notice? Get it out tonight?
We, we publish it tonight, we'll be the.
Why don't we do exactly that? It's, it's call that a special session in the event we need to take action. As much as the Academy Commission is meeting on Monday, if they have questions, maybe we can take that up and have at least a discussion on it. And if we decide to take action, we could. So we could advertise it as a special session and a work session.
If you advertise a special session, be sure to itemize what you would be developing, because it has to be itemized.
It would be correct. It'd be on the budget. Twenty-three, twenty-four. So. And I get that, Dr. Weeks brings up another good point, maybe we're discussing job descriptions in particular. We might want to take action on that as well. So maybe those two items in a special, in a special, uh, session to take action on them, potentially. Any concern or change of that? Seven thirty on May the third, seven thirty A M. I apologize, will I load this in or I'll, especially if that, like, Dr. Weeks, you may want to send a couple of.
Maybe a wake-up call, too.
Call the front desk. Call the front desk, get you up at six.
Just sleep here.
All right, uh, four D has been deferred basically to a special, um, session on May third at seven thirty eight M. Next item, under, item five, director tool report, Dr. Weeks.
Board members, uh, last Thursday on the twentieth, we had an excellent day, I believe. On April twentieth, we had our every student, every day annual meeting. That is a state of the tools address that we, uh, invite the public to and are very pleased with the turnout. That's in their schedule and you were able to be there. Uh, again, that was a, a great day. Um, if, if you'd like to see our video and our slides that, that were put together, we can make that possible through technology. Uh, also you have the director report in your packet. Uh, I've heard mentioned several times tonight that, uh, E cap testing and end of course testing is completing this week. Uh, Dr. Theo, our testing coordinator, has been very diligent in that. Every building has a building testing coordinator. And so we're very pleased with that and anticipating getting some preliminary results back in, in or about the nineteenth. Uh, director's award night is next Tuesday, where we, uh, recognize the highest academic students uh, from kindergarten through eighth grade and the, uh, most well behaved citizenship awards from each one of our school. Uh, that would be at Dixon County High School, uh, in the gymnasium. And so that's a special day for, uh, the life of our district. Uh, the first session is at five thirty and the second section is at six forty-five. Uh, and then, uh, you've all been invited to the, uh, district end of the year banquet and celebration. That is, uh, next Thursday. Again, if you need a ticket or tickets to that, if you would make sure that you let us know this evening. Uh, we have less than seventy, seventy to seventy-five tickets left to that event. And, uh, we, we have sold out the last four to five years when we've had that event. And it's always a very special time, uh, to recognize individuals and groups that have, uh, accomplished a lot this year. Um. Uh, we've already again mentioned graduations. Those are coming up very closely and we're looking forward to those and time to celebrate the many of our families as well. Uh, we'll be sending to you. And again, we've had a very busy month in the month of May. It was just, uh, one event after another. There are most of our club organizations, they're having some sort of banquets. A lot of them are having senior nights. Uh, most of our athletic events are winding down and heading into, uh, tournament play for those that are eligible for that. So it's a, it's an exciting time, uh, for everyone and we're just thankful, uh, for the opportunity to serve.
Board members, questions for Dr. Weeks about the report or the departmental note?
Producing that a message on those, uh, awards.
All those what?
Awards.
Yeah, true. Other questions or comments? Well, Dr. Weeks, anything else on the, thank you, sir. Four, four member comments. Um, any comment from our state representatives on your last evening, Miss, uh, Amy Claire, anything? That's what, maybe give us a little idea about what you're gonna be doing after high school.
Sure. Yeah, I guess, sure. So after graduation, I plan to attend the University of Tennessee at Martin and I'm gonna major in exercise science on the pre-physical therapy track.
Awesome, awesome. Graduation opens. Awesome.
Great. I am planning on, I'm attending the University of Tennessee at Knoxville and then my major's a little bit of a mouthful. So I plan to major in business with a concentration in public administration and leadership and minor in political science with a collateral in public policy. Little bit much, but I'm excited for it.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Like I said, it has been our custom for, uh, just to ask you to come back during the recognition time of our May board meeting. So we've. I don't think there's any expectation you stay for that next meeting, but we'd love to see you on May, any, uh, May twenty-fifth, if you're in town, uh, we'd love to see you come back. Thank you.
Board members, any comments, student representative?
Fifteen years I've seen kids come through, is that, in that position and the first year they're amazing and every year I think that they will never match up. But you both did, uh, come to school events. I see you both in town in public. I see you, uh, carrying great pride in what you do and you, you live this job when you're out in school in public. And I just wish you both well, the best.
Thank you.
Both, you know, very attentive and give me some great ideas, but we see you and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chubb?
Well, I was a little second there. We got some amazing students at this county.
In front of him?
I always find it comforting that, uh, two schools that have, you know, rivalry, rivalry agrees with each other. How, how, uh, you two build a camaraderie amongst yourselves and, and you know, we're all up here from different districts, you know, but we, we, we try, we want to do what's right for, for everybody in the school. And, uh, it's so, I see that with the last ones that were here and with y'all as well, how, you know, you kind of come together and realize, hey, you know, this is Dixon County. Yeah, yeah, I'm from Creekwood. Yeah, I'm from Dixon County High, but this is Dixon County and, and so, uh, it, it makes me proud to see you here. Have that, uh, maturity.
I want to thank you for the job you've done keeping us informed about everything going on in the schools, because we don't hear a lot of that if we don't have children in the schools and for you sticking in there with us for some of these long meetings. We're preparing you for these college classes for them to sit with you at.
Good job by both of you and thank you for your service and you, uh, as they've all said, I mean, we, you make us proud and I'm sure your parents are very proud. And we all look forward to seeing what you're gonna do in the future. So thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Mr. Parker?
You know, I told the story to my wife when I finally figured out that I knew Anna Claire. And I didn't realize I knew her. I just kept looking at her, like, I know that girl, where did I know her from? And I, and I was telling her, like, you know what? She's the girl that comes in there and works in the concession stand. And she said, my wife reminded me, she said, yeah, they'll. Everything y'all wrote is very well written and y'all are very well, very good speakers when y'all read it all out. So I have no doubt in my mind for y'all be very successful. I've enjoyed the time as we have been board members for the same amount of time. Y'all, y'all are all I know, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, I thought we, we usually move on to other board members, but we want to recognize D C A.
Stephen, hey now, from where you based in the school, they wanted to send a shout out to Dr. Weeks, they can prove students to get to the. They sent it up, they lost. Then on April the sixth, Strickburn has held their annual STEAM night where we combine activities from math, science, and the college. The home void, we have a parent. Um, the kids who are still have deep, uh, memory history, we had, and it's time to just. Last thing, and we had several, it was hard on the side, who, who, who signed up. Then each grade level created a couple of games for the kids to go through. We have a science show. It, it was wonderful night. It was, it was good to get the parents back in the building. Um, and then last summer, we met with Dr. Weeks and some of the, some of the city office. Um, and then last summer, we met with Dr. Weeks and some of the, some of the city office staff. And one of the ideas came from that meeting was to have much more meetings with DCA, with city office staff. And from my point of view, I think that we really went. So I wanted to offer, again, my thanks to everybody that's involved in it. And I, DCA, on behalf of DCA, we have a little certificate from you. Miss, I was involved in that, in part of this house. She, she said again, and Miss Dr. Parker. You really appreciate it, huh? And, and she's her highest talking. So I'm really thinking a lot of good, this pleasure put up with you more. And then, and what is? So from the bottom of my heart, I really like the way this is going to be.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Congratulations to you all for what you're doing for the system overall. So thank you all. Board members' comments. Mr. Parker, anything for tonight?
Uh, thank you for this, Mr. Director. It is, looks like good information. I look forward to going over it. I know it was a lot of work for the staff to put together, but I, I do like it. I do want to thank you. And again, thank you, girls, and best of luck to y'all, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
I had two comments tonight, most of the ladies. Uh, I keep thinking that one day somebody could return as a board member. After four R M, you may not. Now, some comments was to. I've heard it from the board members, from parents, things that you don't think we hear often. Uh, but I've heard so many great things about this page post, that I think retirement of someone has that, that much dedication, that many years. Uh, could at least have a thirty-second recognition from somebody that says, I've heard your name and I appreciate what you've done.
Mr. Tucker?
Well, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but uh, since December, we've had forty-two people resign. And I brought this up before, uh, on the HR form, I submitted a. Change in the form a little bit. Um. August, September, October, November minutes did not reveal. Uh, I read that Dr. Weeks covered the resignations, but I, uh, December eleventh. January, there were ten. February nine, March four, April eight. That's that many resignations of people. Some of it may have been a crash and guard. It may have been nutrition worker. But those are people that makes school go. And I think we need to know something about why. These people are leaving, that we, that on the HR form, exit form, there's no uh, uh, space to let people know the length of service. And uh, I, I submitted a form to HR, and I think this home gave it to, to Dr. Weeks. And uh, I've suggested that a couple of times and. I know you said you didn't like the change in the middle of the year, but I can't, I can't think we need to let it go another year without knowing some of these reasons. And so I'm proposing that uh, we adopt that form that I submitted to you.
Mr. Wood, other comments?
About this.
Ms. Rogers?
I just want to mention something about Ms. Post. She probably doesn't know me, but my child had her. My child is not a math student. But she survived your math class and learned something from it. So that means you are a very good math teacher, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Post, enough can't be said about you, because you've been a, I, I think if someone would say you've been an institution here. Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you've done today for, for Dixon County as a student.
So many years.
Well, enjoy, enjoy retirement. So. Board members, thanks for your service. Ladies, thank you immensely for your service and uh. Congratulations to you both, and again, you look to what you do in the future. We are adjourned. Board members, we have an executive session.